Good evening, everyone. I'd like to bring the November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting of the Inverboro Board of School Directors to order. Ms. Carbo, could you have the real call, please?
Ms. Alonso, here. Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Ms. Varekio, here. Ms. Joseph, here. Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chabon?
Here.
Mr. Evans, could we have the invitation, please?
Just to head up, we'll start with the invitation and flagging some of that. Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Inverboro School District, and grant to this board and their deliberations this evening the Spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do may be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the body of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have our reports from Ms. Shemlak and Mr. Ewing.
All right, I'm going to start with the kindergarten. Coming up this month, students will take part in Veterans Day celebration on November twelfth, and the students will be wearing red white. At the beginning of the month, we had our first PVIS assembly honoring our treasured gems of the month. The Fall Book Fair begins on November fifteenth. The week of November twenty-second, there will be no school for students due to parent conferences. Please plan to come and to meet your child's teachers during the available time.
At Glen Olden School, home at school held its book fair in the library the week of October fifteenth. Fourth graders took a trip to Pete's Produce on October twenty-second. The students brought back pumpkins and did a great job decorating them in class. The first grade class walked to the firehouse on October twenty-sixth, and the firemen do a great job setting up the activities for the students. Trunk or treat was also a big success. On Halloween Day, eighth graders went to the Hetero Theater to see Tales of Poe, and on November second, third graders traveled to the Academy of Natural Science. And second graders enjoyed a day at the aquarium on November fifth. On November twelfth, Glen Olden School was proud to open their World War II exhibit.
At Nord School, on October twenty-third, our fifth graders visited John High's Wild Refuge. Our second graders also visited on October thirtieth. All the students had a wonderful time, and on October twenty-second, our middle school held their annual fall fitness at Southland Complex. They had beautiful weather and a great time. Norwood's Human School hosted their annual trunk or treat on October twenty-eighth, and everyone had a great time. Norwood held their annual Halloween Parade and Parties on October thirty-first. Their students looked great in their costumes.
At Prospect Park School, the past few weeks have been very busy. They held their annual Halloween Parade with a tremendous turnout of parents, family, friends, and community members who came out to see all the wonderfully spooky costumes. They held their annual book fair and offered a family book night where families return to school to check out the selection and expand their home libraries. The fifth grade enjoyed a visit from the Mayflower descendants who provided a glimpse into life on the Plymouth Plantation. Middle school students kept with the holiday spirit as nearly two hundred students attended the Student Council Halloween Dance.
For Tinnicum School, on Tuesday, October second, the Tinnicum Fire Company came to the school with many pieces of their equipment. Our first and second grade students had a great time learning about fire prevention and seeing the trucks. Thank you to the members of Tinnicum Fire Company who volunteered their time. We had a beautiful day on Friday, October twelfth, for our annual diabetes walk. This year, two of our own students, Allison Giesner, a fifth grader, and Sam Brooks, an eighth grader, and son of the fourth grade teacher Cindy Roost, spoke out to our students about their diabetes experiences. Our school raised over three thousand dollars for the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation. Our annual ribbon, we took place on Monday, October twenty-second through Friday, October twenty-sixth. Each day, we observed a different theme, allowing for discussions about drug and violence prevention, with accumulations being on Friday and wearing red. Students were reminded to stay near the drugs.
At the high school on October third, fast been night was held. Parents took the opportunity to learn about how to start the process of college applications. School counselors were on hand to answer any questions. On October seventeenth was the Hall of Fame Ceremony. Congratulations to the following people for being inducted into the Hall of Fame this year: Alfred Hagan, Kimberly Duffy, and Richard Williams. The Hall of Fame induction was held at the high school on the morning of October seventeen. Seniors were invited to attend the ceremony, and a big thank you to Rosemary and Claire Riley, Paul Gibson, Cam Ogley, and Andy Costanzo for helping with this year's Hall of Fame. On October twenty-fifth was the Powderpuff Game. Student Council would like to thank everyone who contributed to the success of the game. Our intrepid faculty members who played to a defenseless sixty-six to sixty-six tie. Our terrific reps, Tony Macariello, Joe Barrett, and Jeff Webb for an excellent officiating. The senior class and their advisors, and Mark Shemlak for running the refreshment stand, and Bill Soroka for announcing, and of course, our players. It was an exciting game with the seniors edging out the juniors fourteen to twelve. And this concludes our report.
Thank you both. Moving on to number three, recognition, Ms. Riley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Phelps. Each year, the district during the month of November recognizes staff members who have served the district for thirty years, contributed thirty years of service. This year, we have four teachers to recognize from across the district. We will start with Ms. Kathleen Baiki, front, I will Mr. Mills, and we'll be up here to say a few words. Kathy, come on up.
Yeah, go off together.
All right, and we also have Ms. Barb McNamara.
Good evening, everybody. It's truly my pleasure to have the honor to speak about these two individuals on my teaching staff, and truly mean that. Some of the stuff I had to ask them about their career, because I wasn't here in the beginning, but I added some other words of wisdom from my, you're not saying mine. All right. So Kathy Baiki and Barb McNamara began their teaching careers in Glen Olden School in nineteen eighty-eight, and the largest new hire pool of twenty-five teachers. The six new teachers in Glen Olden School were finally known as the Brat Pack. Both were quickly recruited by the IEA to be building reps. Barbara started as a first grade teacher and sent her students to Kathy, a second grade teacher. Kathy remained in second grade, and Barbara went on to teach sixth grade. In nineteen eighty-eight, Kathy and Barbara attended Whiner University together to obtain their master's degrees in elementary education and reading specialist certifications. In nineteen ninety-three, Barbara transferred to the Norwood School, thank you, as a multi-age teacher, and Kathy transferred to Norwood in two thousand and five, thank you, as a reading specialist. It took twelve years, but they reunited again. Both continued to be active in the IEA. Kathy was a building rep and served on the negotiations committee, and Barbara was also a building rep, rep at large, negotiations committee member, and negotiating team member. Both Kathy and Barbara have worked on many building and district level committees, such as language arts, social studies, science, STEM, PCRP two. It was so long ago neither Kathy nor Barb could remember what that stands for. And yeah, that's why I asked for some of their input, because I had no idea. Kathy has planned and implemented numerous parent workshops, five Building Blocks of Literacy, comprehension reading aloud to your child, phonics, and KSRA, Keystone State Reading Association. Barbara has co-taught science workshops for students during summer enrichment in July. Kathy has attended many professional conferences of note as the Fanta's and Fennel Literacy Level Learning Training, otherwise known as LLI for that. We are currently using the LLI program and are achieving much success with our young readers. Barbara has been focusing on technology in the classroom as of late, working towards a Google Classroom Certification, Mac Data Reporting Webinars, and STEM literacy. I would just like to add that the Norwood School community and I are very lucky to have these two consummate professionals working with our children. The amount of experience and expertise that Barbara and Kathy possess is awe-inspiring, and I truly hope that they continue to enjoy their positions for many years to come and share in their extensive knowledge base by continuing to collaborate with other staff members on our team. Congratulations on achieving the thirty-year milestone of your careers. Thank you very much. Mr. Varekio, my chief of principal, is happy to hand them their apples and certificates. And I'm sure Mr. Varekio would echo my sentiments.
Did I hear apple being certificate? I've had the privilege of teaching with both of these ladies. Kathy, early on in my career at Glen Olden, and Barb and I taught in the same hallway at Norwood for many years, so they're fabulous. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, please.
Ms. Kelly, for Ms. Patty, Patricia O'Brien.
I'm here tonight to help represent Patty O'Brien for her great career here in Inverboro, and I think all thirty at Prospect Park. Yep, first grade, all the way. Teachers teach because they care. Teaching young people is what they do best, requires long hours, patience, and care. At Prospect Park School, we are blessed to have such a caring and dedicated staff. Caring and dedicated are only two of the many qualities of great teaching that describe Patty O'Brien: perseverance, warmth, setting high expectations, and a sense of humor, or a few more. Patty's presence over the past thirty years have yielded countless examples of accomplishment and of grateful students who, in part, can trace their successes back to their first grade experiences in her room. Her caring is limitless. Every student in her room, every year, is important to her, and they know it. Patty takes the time to communicate that to every student through a learning environment that is warm and safe for risk-taking. When a student is down, she picks them up. When they are struggling, she finds a way to make a connection and guide them or even pull them through a difficult time. Even when a student is having the worst day and nothing seems to be going right, Mrs. O'Brien, even keeled, gets right down beside them and without breaking stride continues to speak to them with a positive tone and reassures them and says, "You can do this. You'll be all right. Let's go." Her dedication to her craft and to her students is just as clear. Every lesson reflects time and commitment to ensuring success and setting that high bar for our students to strive for greatness. She never lets her students give up on their task. Instead, she weaves in a set of personal and relatable stories and experiences to comfort her students, reassure them of their abilities, and even make them laugh, to relax them, keep them moving forward and moving towards their goals. Over the past few years, I've gotten to know Mrs. O'Brien very well through my frequent visits to her room. Not only have I gotten to see her, her excellent teaching, and how well she engages and motivates her students, I've gotten some great recipes, including the greatest corned beef and cabbage I've ever had, anyone in my family's ever had. And thanks to Patty, I now own an Instapot. So if you ever want, go to Patty for some ideas. Those visits were always great to see happy students who are happy to be learning and happy to be there with Mrs. O'Brien. Patty has also had a few of our most challenging students, and no matter how difficult any day may have been, she gave one hundred percent and kept that same calm demeanor, sense of humor, and complete care and dedication to our students and helped them to succeed. Patty is well respected by her colleagues, the parents of her students, and by the staff as a whole. She gets results. Her students consistently outperform their expectations, and as further evidence of her success, she has even tutored several of our teachers' own students, her own children. Her students, or her skills and her knowledge, about six and seven-year-olds, make her an irreplaceable asset to our school. President of her community is lucky to have Mrs. O'Brien.
And last but not least, Mr. Johnston, recognizing Patricia. Come on up, Rich.
That is a good retirement dinner, isn't it? Right, you're good. And you notice that Richard's trying to play too, I was a little concerned, I think, oh, he may not have. So Sharon, I'll just walk in right on time. So it was my, it's my privilege, honestly, to say something back to Mr. Howton, and I thought about it, nineteen eighty-eight, so that's thirty years ago, and again, I am just thirty years old myself, so I didn't know what to write about nineteen eighty-eight. So I had to go and look up what nineteen eighty-eight was, things that were, all those types of things. And a lot of great things happened in nineteen eighty-eight, you know, and it's like, and goodness, on Google, I was able to go back. So just a few things that interesting that did happen, for example, nineteen eighty-eight, Sonny Bono became the mayor of Homme Springs. So that started that whole trend of celebrities becoming politics. Here's something else, now you may have been in both of these, I'm not sure, but nineteen thirty-five, the first ninth game was played in baseball. Okay, really didn't get lights on their field until nineteen eighty-eight. Yeah, so that's a long hit. And then, of course, you were hired, so Inverboro did a really smart thing by hiring Mr. Howton in nineteen eighty-eight to serve for this district for thirty years. And I thought, wow, thirty years, and one of the nice things, in the last six that we've been together, my door is always open, and one of the things the high schools are, hey, you got a minute? You got a minute? Yeah, I have a minute. Rich has never asked me for a minute. I was going, I got out of his room, the kids are doing their thing, he's got them all moving their gates, they respect him. When he's done a hall of duty, he's right where I need him to be, is the way that keeps the kids moving along. One of those guys, I can't thank somebody like him enough for everything he has done for our school, our kid, the folks who have had Mr. Howton or even worked with Mr. Howton, even the first few years, like when I was walking around. You know, and I said, you know, just like the holler halls of the high school, very little has changed at the time. Walls are still the same, all the way from the state eight, right, seventy-four, whenever the school started. And the sixth, the same thing, he is dedicated, he is committed to these kids, he does his job, he comes in and out and serves the district, and like Mr. Kelly said about being irreplaceable, the hoot man as his profession referred to, absolutely irreplaceable, it's been an absolute pleasure so much, Howton. Thank you very much.
I stand here?
Yeah. I got your best side, you're great. Thank you all very much.
Moving on to number four, public comments, Ms. Riley.
There is nobody signed in for this meeting.
Moving on to number five.
Motion five point one, that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Inverboro Board of School Directors held on October seventeenth, twenty eighteen, be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And next, one, solicitor, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. So our office provided the following services throughout the last month. It serviced the special education teachers on IEP writing. The office also undertook policy review. Additionally, it met with the IEA, I'm sorry, IEA, to discuss federal education law. In addition, they consulted with the district on special education litigation and other litigation matters. And lastly, it helped work with the district responding to rights and requests. Thank you. This is my report.
Moving on to number seven, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Finance, motion seven point one, that the attached treasurer's report for the month ending October thirty-first, twenty eighteen, be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next question, Mr. Evans.
Motion seven point two, that fund dispersment in the amount of three million, five hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and ninety-seven cents, be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next question, Mr. Evans.
Motion seven point two, that fund dispersment in the amount of three million, five hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and ninety-seven cents, be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. No worries, is there any further comments, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
Moving on to jump right in, number nine, your community report. Nine point one, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on Monday, November fifth, twenty eighteen. The first item was the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget timeline. Mr. High School provided the board with important budgetary dates and actions that will be needed to be taken regarding department budget meetings, preliminary budget votes, requirements for PDE, and a final budget vote. We are looking at either voting on a preliminary budget or passing a resolution not to exceed the adjusted index in January and a final budget vote in June. The document will ensure that we are doing our due diligence developing nineteen twenty district budget. The second item on the agenda was the tax index for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget. The base tax index for this year is two point three percent with an adjusted tax index of three point one percent. The base index for last year was two point four, and the adjusted for last year was three point two. Historically, the board has never gone above the adjusted tax index. It is my impression, based on the discussion at the finance meeting, that we will continue that trend this year. The third item on the agenda was the food service equipment replacement. Mr. High School notified the board that there are two pieces of equipment that need to be replaced. First, the dishwasher at the Kindergarten Academy, which would cost about sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. This would be under a state contract. The second item was the walk-in freezer at Tinnicum School, which would cost approximately thirty-five to forty thousand dollars. This item will need to go out for bid. These items will be paid for through the Food Service Fund, which currently has two hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars. This money will not come from the general fund. The committee stressed the need to purchase these items sooner rather than later due to the importance of, to the overall operation of the kitchens. We also discussed the status of the audited financial statements. Majors and masters, the district's independent auditor have been reviewing the district documents and are preparing a draft report. We will hold an audit committee meeting in December prior to the monthly board meeting to review the audit and ask questions. This meeting will be open to the public. Mr. Phelps asked members of the board who would like to be part of the audit committee, Mr. Goldsboro, Mr. Evans, and myself, volunteer. Finally, the preliminary financial statements were discussed. All board members had the opportunity to read the monthly department spending, year-to-date revenues, and year-to-date expenditures, and ask questions. The committee adjourned, there will be no finance meeting in December. I will pick back up in January, but during the month of December, Mrs. Riley and Mr. High School will begin their department meetings in preparation for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon. Moving on to nine point two, Mr. Evans, GBO.
The GBO meeting was held on November fifth, twenty eighteen, convened at seven thirty, immediately following the finance committee meeting. Mr. Evans will give a presentation on the newest set of metrics being used by the state known as future ready, which is a slight departure from standardized testing with an emphasis on preparing students to enter the world after high school with college career and community readiness. The operations department, more precisely Mr. Galloway, provided information regarding the Safe Drinking Water Act testing and results. Those results can be made available if anybody wants additional detail. Mr. Garrett Galloway also spoke about the condition of some of the school's roofs, pointing out that while all were within spec, they're starting to show age and deterioration due to weather. Mr. Galloway also made a recommendation that the district consider purchasing an additional plow truck to supplement the two that we currently have, citing the fact that previous years had four babbles of various properties last year, and especially apropos with the nights impending weather, towards Mars, I'm sorry. Superintendent Riley talked about the first reading of updated policy regarding educational stability and students in foster care, and the GBO meeting was adjourned at eight twenty-five PM.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Moving on to nine point three, legislative update, Mr. Rettina.
Yes, there are just two legislative updates that I would like to mention. The first concerns school bus cameras, which was Senate Bill ten ninety-eight and was now Act one fifty-nine, signed by Governor Wolf on October twenty-fourth. And this is a bill that would amend the vehicle code to allow for the installation of automated side stop signal arm enforcement system that includes cameras on school buses to capture information on vehicles that fail to stop. Information recorded by the systems will be sent to the police and citations will be issued. And the second one is Senator McGarregals' bill, which was Senate Bill ten ninety-five, which also was signed by Governor Wolf on October twenty-fourth and is now Act one fifty-eight. And this is the bill that creates the alternative pathways for students' high school graduation other than passing the Keystone Exam. The alternative options for students that do not meet Keystone Exam requirements would involve showing proficiency on the SAT, ESAT, or ACT exam, passing an advanced placement or international bachelor laureate exam, completing a dual enrollment program, completing an apprenticeship program, or getting accepted into an accredited four-year nonprofit institution higher education. So this, again, was signed by Governor Wolf on October twenty-fourth, and congratulations to Senator McGarregal for getting this passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGarregal. Moving on to nine point four, our county community college.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Before I go on my report, I have something else that happened thirty years ago, also I graduated. As a matter of fact, we're having that now. Anyway, on Wednesday, October twenty-fourth, we, there was the annual appreciation dinner for sponsoring school board directors, superintendents, and principals out of Delaware County Community College. In attendance were Ms. Varekio, Ms. Alonso, Mrs. Riley, Mr. Harris, Mr. Chabon, and myself. They had food. We were going to be there. That's right, you got to bring food. So the food was delicious. We were lucky enough to sit with the president of Delaware County Community College at our table, Dr. Joy Gates Black, and we were able to sit down and talk with her. A few of the school board members were able to discuss the fact that their students were involved, or their children were involved in the dual enrollment program. After the dinner, there was a presentation by Dr. Paula Pitcher, who was the VP of Enrollment Management, about the overall enrollment and dual enrollment at Delaware County Community College. Approximately fifty-five percent of the enrollment comes, at Delaware County Community College, comes from the sponsoring school districts. And using the data from Inverboro High School graduating class of two thousand and thirteen, within five years, approximately one-third of the students that graduated in nineteen, in two thousand and thirteen, ended up enrolling in at least one class at Delaware County Community College. Success rate for the dual enrollment, which was pretty interesting, and the fact that getting a C or better considered success rate, for anyone who's enrolled in dual enrollment, they had about an eighty-six percent chance of getting a C or better versus seventy-five percent for the general population that was taking classes there. Some of the highlights that Mr. Brian Hines, a counselor for the Inverboro High School, sent to us regarding the dual enrollment. In fall two thousand and fourteen, we had five students, I think that's when the dual enrollment started, that participated. In two thousand and fifteen, we had eleven students, and fast forward to two thousand and eighteen, we had thirty-five students that are currently enrolled, and in the spring, it looks like we're going to have forty-two students that are enrolled in that, correlating to about a hundred and thirty credits. Some of the courses that students are taking there are Intro to World Religions, Public Speaking, Interpersonal Communications, Introduction to Psychology, Astronomy, Introduction to Business, and Introduction to Computer Science. And the cost for students at Inverboro that want to take those are at about a seventy percent discount off of traditional tuition. I think it costs about a hundred and sixty-five dollars for students to take that. And if they earn a C or better, those, the cost of tuition is reimbursed. And so they're getting exposure to college courses. They can, as long as they go through the application process and the testing and the registration, which is all done at Inverboro High School, they can, and they meet the academic criteria and attendance criteria, and they have the prerequisites, they can take any course that they want to at Delaware County Community College. As long as Inverboro doesn't offer the doesn't offer the AP course. So with that information, then there was a presentation on the economic impact of the Delaware County Community College by Mr. Craig Fritz. And as a sponsoring school, Innaborough sponsorship appropriation for this fiscal year will be $450,000, $450,298. That's a lot of money. And when I saw that, I was like, what did we as taxpayers get for that? And with that investment? And so one of the things that they did was an economic impact study. And for that, as taxpayers, for every $1 of investment in added state revenue and public sector savings, we get a return of $5.20. So for every $1, we essentially, as taxpayers, reap the benefit of $5.20, which is quite a good investment. Students, on the other hand, they get, for every $1 they invest, they get, and a lifetime earnings with that $1 investment, they get $3.50. So for total annual impact in Delaware County, $610 million is added to, added income to Delaware County, which is equivalent to about $8,619. And to put it in more perspective, I thought this was funny, the impact for Delaware County Community College is 5.6 times greater than the impact of the NFL Draft when it was in Philadelphia. So I thought that was quite interesting. After the dinner, everybody else got a chance to go home, but I didn't. I stayed. And there was a liaison meeting with the president, Dr. Joy Gates-Black. And a couple of things that she enlightened us was that enrollment is trending back upwards after a low point last academic year. For the ninth year row, Delaware County Community College has been chosen as a great college to work for. Westchester University and Delaware County Community College are now offering a Bachelor of Science in Business Management with a minor in Business Law for Delaware County Community College Associate Degree graduates, and they're going to be able to do that right there on campus. So it's something new that they're trying and reaching out to some other institutions. And they also have implemented a new alert system campus-wide, and we saw this thing on the wall, but like, what is that? We thought we didn't know what it was, and there's a sign literally, this is what this is. It's a new alert system. So they have an alert system. Last thing is, our next meeting will be in January 16th of 2019, and that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsboro. Okay, moving on to 9.5, Delaware County Community Committee. Here we go. Super log, just, I'm super log, it's going to be boring, throw dollars, I can't get it.
The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board met on November 7th. Approved was the Haverford Township School District for the DCI to provide training. Wilson Foundation to provide, to provide training. Solutions Tree to provide that training. Chester Upland School District, DCIU, to provide Introduction to Google G Suites training. Lot of training going on here. Approval to appoint the new principal of the Delaware County Technical Schools for Fall Cough, Mr. Daniel Palmer. Also, we approved five adults, 72 students, to attend the automotive training center in Wilmington, Wilmington, PA. Approved three adults and 32 students to attend the Greater New York Dental Conference. Approved a new welding technical program. Approved the contract with the Delaware County Community College to provide dual enrollment to the Auto Tech Program. And finally, to approve eight students and two advisors to attend the Skills Fall Leadership Conference in the Poconos. That should be really fun. For more information and news and happenings, go to DCIU.org. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. At this time, our student council could ask for excuse. Also, Mr. Chavone stated in his report that the Org Committee selected his Mr. Chavone, Mr. Evans, and this Mr. Goldsboro, which we can't read from this. We've got, okay, moving on to number 10, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Personnel, motion that the following personnel actions be approved. Motion 10.1 to 10.8, starting on page two and ending on page five.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion from, also from Personnel, motion 11.1, with regret that the following retirement be accepted. Mr. Dennis Morley, Bus Monitor, with eight years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective October 29th, 2018. 11.2, Antoine F. Patrone, School Assistant at Norwood School with 12 years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective November 1st, 2018. 11.3, Susan Hunt, Special Education Teacher at the high school with 18 years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective January 1st, 2019, under terms and conditions set forth in the current agreement with the I E A. And 11.4, Roseanne Lenza, Library Assistant at Norwood School with 20 years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective January 4th, 2019.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? At this time, we would like to thank all these members and the work they've done for this district and the years that they've put in, and we do appreciate it for sure. As said, are there no comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion that the following items be approved. Motion 12.1 to 12.5.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Special Education, People's Services, motion that the following items be approved, 13.1 and 13.2.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Again, I, just like when these types of motions are on the board and for the public that are seeing the dollar figures, when we do the budget in the spring, the People's Services Department anticipates these, and we budget for the, you know, potential placements. So this is not something that would add on to the, you know, go, add on, like, we're taking out of the general fund. So these were budgeted items that we anticipate. So I just like to point that out because they are some high-dollar amounts.
Thank you, Mr. Chavone. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved, 14.1 and 14.2.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
This motion is a roll call motion. Motion 15, that the board of school directors approve the following memorandum of understanding between the Innaborough School District, the Innaborough Education Support Professionals, CBA 7-1, 2013 through 6-30, 2018, and the Innaborough Education Association, 7-1, 2017 through 6-30, 2020, under the terms and conditions of collective bargaining agreement, N R S M O U.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's a roll call.
Oops. Howard's going.
Ms. Alonso? Yes. Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Vericchio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 16 is also a roll call motion, that the board of school directors approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Innaborough School District and the Innaborough Education Support Professionals effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2023. This is a roll call motion.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just a quick comment, Mr. Phelps. I just want to thank the I S B for negotiating. I know we spent a couple of long nights to get this done, and I think it's beneficial to both, whilst we value your group, and I think with this disagreement, I think that shows that we do value you. So I just want to thank you guys for negotiating with us.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Chavone. Yes, also, I hope the I E S P does realize how important your group is to this board, and we negotiated in good faith, and I thought we came up with a pretty good agreement for both of us as well. And we do appreciate all the work that you do. It does not go unappreciated for one second. We know for a fact he's probably having one of the hardest jobs ever.
Mr. Phelps, may I make a comment, please?
Sure.
Okay, I thank you very much for making the exception. I just wanted to thank the board, and also Mr. Chavone and Mr. Phelps, and Mr. Chris Colow. We did value the negotiation process. We thank you for hearing our concerns and coming together in good faith. We would like to thank you for the effort that's been on both parts, and we agree that we think that we made a nice compromise, and we are very happy with you doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Ms. Goldsboro, do we have a roll call on this?
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Vericchio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries eight zero. Congratulations, everyone. Moving on to number 17, Mr. Evans?
Motion that board of school directors accept the resignation of school board director Bridget Burnhour, representative of Tinnicum Township Region 9, Ward 2 and 5, effective November 5th, 2018.
With regret. Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? I would like to thank Ms. Burnhour for her service to the board. I'm not sure if she wants to let everybody know why she's resigned, why she's moved out of the district. So she really doesn't have a choice but... But we do appreciate everything she brought to the board and her visions and ideas. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 18, that the board of school directors approve the first reading of the following policies in category of people's, in honor of people's, 55, educational stability for children in foster care.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Do we have any board business? Any... Hearing none. Any board business? At this time, we're going to turn over to you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, everyone. My voice. This is a friendly reminder to all of our parents of students in grades pre-K to 8 that conferences are taking place on November 19th, 20th, and 21st, so students are off. The high school is in session with an 11:20 dismissal on Wednesday, the 21st, for the Thanksgiving holiday. Note to all of our middle school parents that report cards are being sent home on Friday with your children. If you do not have a conference already scheduled, but have questions or concerns about your child's report card, please don't hesitate to contact the school or your child's teacher directly. Innaborough's High School Theater is proudly presenting 12 Angry Doors, which opens tomorrow night, November 15th, and runs through November 17th. Tickets can be purchased online or at the door, and more information is available through the website. I'd like to wish all the students and the staff good luck. They've worked really, really hard on this performance, and I'm excited to see the show tomorrow night. On November 5th, Innaborough School District was honored to have Pedro Rivera, the Secretary of Education for Pennsylvania, visit our district. Due to the limited time that he was able to be here, he was only able to stop by the kindergarten academy, Prospect Park, and the high school. The visit provided us the opportunity to showcase a few of the many outstanding programs that we have here in the district. We began the morning with a roundtable discussion with many of our board members, administrators, and teachers present. Ms. Secretary Rivera shared a few of the initiatives that PDE is focusing on, as well as answered a few of our questions. We are in the process of preparing a slideshow video that we will be placing on the website. It should be available at the end of the week. I would like tonight the board members, administrators, and teachers who are able to participate in the roundtable, and for those teachers who welcomed Secretary Rivera into their classrooms. It really was a fabulous morning, and really was an opportunity for us to showcase all the wonderful things that we do here in Innaborough. I'm pretty sure that this was the only school district that he has visited in Delaware County. So I think that just goes to show all of our hard work and what we do here. And last but not least, Thanksgiving is quickly approaching, so that means a Bucks-Ridley football game. This year, it is here at South Avenue. There will be a bus transporting over to South Avenue beginning at 8:45. I hope to see many of you there, and I wish you all the best Thanksgiving. Thank you so much.
Mr. Evans? Do we have any comments from the board? Myself, I would like to say thank you to our administration, our staff, our superintendent. Yous are the ones that got the Secretary of Education to this school district. He stood up and took notice to this district because of the things that we are doing and the things that we are implementing from you guys. You are hard work, and yous are established. I don't know if everybody remembers this, but when he said it, it just blew my mind. He was sitting here, and he said to this staff and this administration that the things that we are doing, some of the things that we are doing in our district, is exactly what he wants the rest of the schools to be doing in the state that's around here. This is the things that yous are doing, the things that yous are implementing, the leadership that yous are showing. I told the teachers early on this year that we are the district that is being watched. The other school districts are sitting there and they're wondering, how are they doing? What are they doing? How are they getting that done? You guys are doing it. I'm telling you, kudos to you. Pat's on the back. I don't know what else to say to this, because you're doing a fantastic job. I can't tell you how proud of yous that this board is, and keep up the great work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any other comments? Hearing none. On Monday, December 3rd, 2018, a board reord meeting will be held at the 6:30 p.m. in the boardroom in the Administration Building. The next work session of the Innaborough Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the Administration Building on Monday, December 17th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Innaborough Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the Administration Building on Wednesday, December 19th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming after me.